Good afternoon. Welcome to Board of County Commissioners's public hearings at 1:30. We're going to start with item number P-40.
Would you like to know when it was noticed, sir?
Yes.
Okay, P-40 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on April 19th, 2023, and by affidavit as certified mailings and site postings.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Nick Carrius Vito is planning development. I'll go ahead and read the ordinance title. In ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 15 from ROR Retail Office Residential and RES1, residential one dwelling unit for gross acre to comm commercial on approximately 20.13 acres of real property located at the northwest intersection of State Road 52 and Happy Hill. And a text amendment creating subarea policy flu 7.1.62 in Massey-Happy Hill. And a map amendment to the future land use map 2-9 adding subarea map 2-962, Pittman, Massey, Happy Hill. And providing for additional text amendments as necessary for consistency, providing for repealer survivability and effective date. And we have staff to make the presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hyatt Mizeli, Staff Planner with Long Range Planning, and I will be presenting item P-40. This is the map of the general location of the subject site. It is located in the North Market area and not within the northeast Pasco rural area. This is an aerial view, or more like a zoomed-in aerial view of the site location. As you see, it is situated in the northwest corner of County Road 52 and Happy Hill Road intersection. And this is another aerial that shows the local context as well as the surrounding or existing conditions surrounding the subject site. As you see, the subject property is surrounded by residential uses, and we also have villages of Pasadena Hills to the south of the subject property. There is a planned trail called Clinton Avenue Trail that's running through VOPH. And there's also the Orange Belt Trail. The proposed route will be in the vicinity, and a connection to that trail should be considered to the site. The site has a little bit of history, and I'd like to run through it before I present the project. So in 1975, the zoning, the original zoning districts established the C2 general commercial zoning districts along the frontage or the southern portion of the subject site. But in 1991, when the comprehensive plan was adopted, the established flu was RES1, which created a conflict between zoning and land use. In 2006, the BCC determined that this C2 zoning district lies within a commercial node. This commercial node is located at the southeast corner of the subject site, and it is about 10 acres, 660 feet by 660 feet. This determination prompted a flu amendment from RES1 to ROR, residential office, retail or retail office residential. And the intent of this amendment was to ensure consistency with the comprehensive plan, more specifically flu 1.5.2, which addresses conflict zoning between land use and zoning. The intent of the amendment was also to allow for commercial development on the site. On March 10th of 2020, the subject's property was removed from the northeast Pasco rural area because it was intended for commercial development, given the vested commercial, and it was not suitable for northeast rural development standards. They say a picture is worth a thousand words. So I have here a picture showing what I had been describing in the previous slide. As you see, the subject site has two zoning districts, C2 and AR. And the surrounding zoning to the north is R1, to the east is R2, and to the south and west is MPUD or Master Plan Unit Development. This is the existing future land use map. The site again has two flu designations, ROR on about 9.9 acres and RES1 on about 10.23 acres. The surrounding existing future land use to the north and to the west is PD or Plan Development, I'm sorry, is RES1. And to the east is RES6, and to the south is PD, Plan Development. It is very important to mention that there is a Category 1 wetland on the southeast, southwest corner of the subject site. This wetland cannot be impacted, and a 25-foot upland buffer is required. And as you see right here, the wetland provides a buffer between the commercial development and the East Point residential to the west. Now we get to the project's overview. The applicant is proposing a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use designation from RES1 and ROR to comm commercial on approximately 20.13 acres to allow for commercial development. The applicant is also proposing a comprehensive plan text amendment to add subarea policy flu 7.1.62, Pittman-Massey-Happy Hill, to identify potential uses as well as maximum intensities and densities on the subject site. We are very familiar with the location of the site right now. It's at the northwest corner of CR 52 and Happy Hill Road intersection. The resolution to the applicant proposal is to amend flu map 2-15 and sheet 15 from RES1 and ROR to comm, as well as to amend flu map 2-9, adding subarea map 2-962, Pittman-Massey-Happy Hill. As for rezoning, there is currently a rezoning petition in the name of RZ 7706, Pittman-Massey-Happy Hill, in review to rezone from AR Agricultural Residential Districts and C2 General Commercial Districts to C2 General Commercial Districts. This is the proposed future land use map. As you see, the proposed comm flu will unify the site to one flu, commercial. And this comm flu is a compatible transitional land use to the surrounding uses around the site. The Planning and Development Department found that the proposed amendment to be consistent with the following comprehensive plan policies. And with that, we recommend that, I'm sorry, we recommend that the Board find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and adopt by roll call vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll just say.
I'll have one.
Okay. I would tell you, I remember this site a long time ago, coming before us. It was the same time the property at Trinity in Little Road was being proposed. And the Trinity in Little Road was a really fancy one, but it was a full-developed site. And that got approved, and this one got approved. I thought this whole site was covered the way it needed to be, so I'm actually surprised to see it coming back. I thought we had set this up a long time ago for good commercial. Chris Starkey.
Well, I think Clark's coming up to talk to us and when he's done then I'll ask him my question.
Okay.
I did talk to him this morning, but forgot to ask.
Any other questions for staff?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hyatt. For the record, Clark Hobbie, Hobbie in Hobbie, PA, 109 Old Brush Street, Tampa, Florida, have not been sworn, but that's not necessary because it's a comm plan amendment. The subject site has been owned by the Pittman and Massey family since the 1950s. Basically, what staff is telling you, and this goes back a long time that I've been working on the site, Barbara and I actually worked on this at some length in 2005, '06, and '07, but 19 of the 20 acres already have ROR or vested commercials. So basically, we're just cleaning this up to make the whole thing commercial. The family's hope and intent is when we finish rezoning the last portion of it on the top to C2, hopefully we'll have enough depth on the site to have a quality anchor tenant user. Right now, the 390 or so feet that we have in C2 on the zoning side is really only enough to have one row of out partials, and that's what the family's been trying to avoid for many years. We want something better. We've been trying to get, you know, people like Publix in there for many years. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Chris Starkey.
Okay. So, you know, we brought up trails, and I know we're working on Orange Belt routes and, and of course, while we may have the main route going north of there, hopefully, it's always good to have connections to it. So have staff talked to you about whether the trail on Old 52 is on the north side or the south side of that road?
No, we haven't gotten to that point. Keep in mind, this is just a plan amendment, and you plenty in zoning. So that's kind of speculative and out there. I would say, and I don't, Barbara represents the IFRADs who own the property on the south. Given the topo on the north side of 52 in this area, it would be harder for me to imagine a trail going on the north side because it's going to be harder to deal with on the topographical side, which is why the county has a route study in this area, and all the ponds go on the south side of the road for that reason. But I'm happy to, we'll be happy to chat with you all.
I just thought it out there, but I don't think we know where it's coming in that area, and we just need to be prepared to be able to place it.
Sure. Understood.
Commissioner Whiteman.
Thank you. You know my questions, Mr. Omen.
Sure.
Protect the integrity that it will be a commercial site through and through.
That's, that's why we're here today, to get it all to commercial. And we, and just for the Board's benefit, some of you all may not know this, but we were under contract for a townhouse rental project a year and a half ago, and staff and certain Commissioners heavily encouraged me to take the rest of the site to commercial and leave it at commercials. That's why we're here today.
Thank you. So I appreciate you holding the integrity of it being truly and politically a commercial site. Obviously, you know my feelings about topo, so I'm just sensitive to that.
Understood.
I'm good with the site. I've discussed this several times with the owner and with Clark and the group, so I'm good with it. We have public comment on this?
Coming up, yep.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Starkey.
Not only do I want us to be cognizant of what possibly will be along Old 52, also up Happy Hill. I don't know where the plan is to turn north, but it, that is coming.
You do have, you do have an approved route study for the first 1,200 or so feet. There's actually a plan that you all approved for around about at that intersection, and that plans go up, and there is a widening of the road for the first quarter mile or so. The question will be over the long haul, what happens with Happy Hill? Because obviously, City of Dade City has had quite a bit of growth in that area, and that will be something that the Board, the Board will have to discuss over time.
Stop the Commissioner.
I'm aware of what the city's doing, and we are talking about around about in that area, and the city is across the street from this property on the east side of Happy Hill, and they're developing that over there.
Okay. Thank you. It's time for public comment. Anyone signed up for public comment?
There is not. There is not.
Okay. Anyone on WebEx? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, so roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Okay, District 1 Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford. District 5 Chairman Mariano.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Commissioner Bradley, who's been excused. Item P-41, do we have, I'll see. Now we have proceeded the public hearings. The county attorney will read the procedures explaining the procedures for rezoning. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the Board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this Board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the Board's Land Development Code. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear the audience in, please?
Yes, if anyone is here to speak on any of the items, please stand and raise your right hand so I can swear you in. All right, any of the kids speaking? If you think you might speak, you can stand and be sworn in.
We don't charge. It's free.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to, first two items will be continued, P-41.
Yes, P-41 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on April 19th, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item P-41 is a conditional use in the name of Ace Cheval Inc., BBBTS LLC, T-Mobile South LLC, 190-foot above-ground level monopole wireless communications facility in the MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District in South Central Pasco County on the north side of 20-mile-level road approximately 1,550 feet east of Collier Park. Requested continuance to the June 20 BCC meeting in Newport Ritchie at 1:30 p.m.
We have a motion to continue P-41.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That would be move to continue the item.
Continue, sorry. Approve the continuance.
Yeah.
So item P-42, another continuance, we approve.
Was 41 a roll call vote?
No, not for continuation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, P-42 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on April 19th, 2023.
Item P-42 is a development agreement, April Development Agreement Connected City by King Lake Partners LP. Is a development agreement for the April MPUD to design permit and construct roadway improvements in exchange for transportation development fee credits. And this is a requested continuance to the June 20 BCC meeting in Newport Ritchie at 1:30 p.m.
Okay, we have a motion to continue.
Move approval to June 20.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there's one additional continuance to be walked on for the record. It was submitted prior to the beginning of the meeting. This is for, if I may read the ordinance title. In ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 22 from AGR Agricultural Rural to PD Plan Development on approximately 2,903 acres of real property located north of State Road 52, approximately 2.25 miles east of Lando Lakes Boulevard, and a text amendment creating subarea policy flu 7.170 4G Ranch PD and a map amendment to the future land use map 2-9 adding subarea map 2-970 4G Ranch PD. And an amendment to the, an amendment to Conservation Element Map 3-4, Critical Linkages Map, providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer survivability and effective date. And this is requested continuance to the July 11, 2023 meeting of the Board of County Commissioners at 1:30 p.m. here in Dade City. And with the walk-on, there was a proof of publication that was submitted.
Yes, I shall prove the publication.
Oh, this is a walk-on? I didn't, okay. What was the date?
July 11.
July 11th?
Yeah.
I move approval to, move it to July 11.
Recommend, recommend continuance to the July 11, 2023 meeting at 1:30 in Dade City or soon thereafter is may be heard, but this was advertised, this was advertised as an adoption.
Okay.
So, so you need to take, you need to see if there's anybody in who has shown up for the newspaper ad.
So before we even take a second on that, did proof?
So this was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on February 15th, 2023.
Okay. All right, is anyone in the audience here to speak to this item? Anyone on WebEx?
There is not.
Okay.
And I have a question. Is this a change from what we just approved, or is this part two of what we approved?
I think you did the transmittal, and this would be the adoption. And that's the question I was asking, Terry.
So I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion to continue.
Motion to continue.
Second. So I second the motion to continue.
That I declare wrong. So the motion to continue, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion to continue to July 11. And now we have a consent agenda.
P-43 was advertised in Tampa Bay Times on April 19th, 2023.
P-43 is a development of regional impact, DRI rescission. Northwood MPUD Master Plan Unit Development slash DRI Development of Regional Impact by Taylor Morrison of Florida Incorporated. They request to rescind the Northwood DRI number 119 in South Central Pasco County, southwest quadrant of the intersection of State Road 56 and Northwood Palms Boulevard on approximately one mile east of Interstate 75. And this is on the consent agenda, but it's a recommendation to approve.
Okay. Is there any opposition to this in the audience? Any opposition to this on WebEx?
There is no one signed up on WebEx or...
P-43 on consent. P-44?
P-44 was advertised in Tampa Bay Times on May 10th, 2023.
Leonela Alvarez, Fiscal Services Manager with Public Infrastructure Fiscal Services and Business Administration. Item P-44, PIFPA 23-0293, resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, designating that area commonly known to as Conner Cross as a streetlight service area for streetlight improvements and to loving assessments against the property benefited by the street lighting improvements in accordance with the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, Article 3, Section 94-46 through 94-56. We do have a presentation of the Board would like to see.
Let's see if we, we may not need it. Is anyone here in speak in opposition of P-44?
There is no one signed up.
Okay. We'll leave it on consent. Thank you. P-45?
I want to pull that out.
Yep, we're going to pull, pull item P-45. P-46, pull that one as well.
46.
Yes. Okay. All right, so for items P-43, P-44, do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so items are done. Let's go to item P-45.
Okay, P-45 was advertised in Tampa Bay Times on April 19th, 2023.
Good afternoon. Tammy Snyder, Planning Development. Did you want the whole presentation, or did you just want to ask a question?
I need a full presentation.
Full presentation?
Okay.
All right. We have PDD 23, 7624 Nest Hockey Academy MPUD. A location map. That is McHenry Road. Here's a overview. It proposes rezoning from AC zoning district to an MPUD to allow the development of a hockey academy with a maximum of 150 students. The Henderson Ice Rink was approved with a special exception designation to allow the use, but it capped the student-employee population until such time as the property was rezoned to be requested MPUD to allow a hockey academy. The application, the applicant is also seeking the following variation from LVC, Section 402.5D, requires a thousand-foot distance between a school, place of worship, or a park for alcohol consumption. As this academy expects to host tournaments and other such sporting functions where alcohol may possibly be served, the applicant wishes a waiver from this requirement. Staff analysis, PDD has no concerns in recommending approval for the distance waiver. The waiver is for the distance requirement only, and if any sales or consumption is to occur, they still have to get the administrative use permit. The MPUD is within the business core of Connected City, and the Connected City comm plan requires a mix of uses within walkable distances, and that could be hindered with the $1,000, $1,000, $1,000-foot requirement. Additionally, the unique nature of the site is likely to promote tourism by hosting events that may benefit from or require the availability of alcohol either at or near the site. Here is their master plan. That is Vision Roadway, Boyette in red. The surrounding area is in transition. It has, it's in close proximity to the Murata Connected City MPUD, Epperson Ranch, Aprili Ellis, and is planned pursuant to the Connected City overlay. The Vision Road AF, also known as Boyette, bisects the property, and the applicant is required to dedicate the right of way for it and connect once it's constructed and open. And the same road, once constructed, will And the same road, once constructed, will contain at least one multi-use path within the right-of-way as per the Connected City Master Roadway Plan. And the applicant will improve McHenry Road from the project entrance north to Tyndale Road. And the proposed request is consistent with the Pasco LDC, Chapter four-hundred, Subsection four-oh-two-point-two zoning amendment, uh, MPUD, and with the applicable provisions of the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan. And with that, we recommend approval with conditions.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Yep. If you will, go back to the map. Shed's located there. Whoa.
You want the, the master plan?
Right there. Where is the Vision Road?
It's in red.
Oh, it's right there, okay.
Yeah.
I was looking for a while ago, and I couldn't see it, and I didn't realize where that was at. So, the reason I pulled this, and I think it's a, a great project, um, there were some issues with it when it started, because the applicant was doing things without permits, and I actually had stopped him from doing things because he was doing it without permits, so I had stopped him. But when they get the conditional use, and this is something we need to pay attention to in the future, is the fact that when they got the conditional use to put this project, and it's a residential area, but it's a commercial, to me, it's a commercial project, because it invites a lot of people in this area. When they get started, started the project, this Vision Road was there, but because they went through only the planning commission to get their conditional use, the site plan for the site review of the property before we started building wasn't happening, did not happen, until we stopped and, and looked at it. Because he could have built his rink in this Vision Road area, and we'd have had a real problem in this property. So when, somehow, when they, something goes, and I guess, Mr. Stein, I don't know if you can tell us, but when a project goes forth and goes through conditional use and doesn't come to the board, those other things of, of, uh, the property and the, they're looking at the property for things, that it's clear to make sure there's a Vision Road. The planning commission, I don't think, were realizing that there was a Vision Road, because nobody had done the first check of the property to make sure the building wasn't going to be in, in that location where the Vision Road is. So it's, it just kind of went a little too far, I think, before it actually started holding brakes and, and making sure. And the other fact is, McHenry was never supposed to be, uh, a road that would not be substandard. It was never supposed to be anything. And this Vision Road is only, only set to happen with, probably within the next ten years. So it's hard for a project. The main issue with this project is that, number one, it was put in a residential area. If it had gone into a commercial area, the roadwork and the road that they need to supply the transportation for this project would have already been in a commercial area. And we wouldn't have been worrying about paving McHenry and doing some other things, and, and the fact that Vision Road's ten years out. So it's, it, there's a lot of unanswered things on, on doing some of this.
Yes, Mr. Stark. Mr. Stark.
I'm reading, it says, this MPUD is within the business core of Connected City. So it's not residential, it's in the business...
Well, they've been stating there's residential all around this.
Well, yeah.
Maybe Brad can answer that, because that's what I've been told all along. They build it in a residential area.
Brad, Team Planning and Development. Yes, it's, just to clarify the timeline a little bit, a little bit. Um, the actual facility itself was done originally, it was permitted as a private rink for the home, as an accessory structure to his house.
So the, the owner's home was on this property? That he lived at and was going to build it?
That was, that was how it was, how it was done. At the time, the site plan for it came through, we did look at where the Vision Road would be to make sure that there were no buildings going in there, so we were going to take care of that and make sure that that was all taken care of.
But, but the question I'm asking is, was the person that was doing the conditional use for his home, is his home here on this property?
So this was before the conditional use. This was not a part of the conditional use. This was a, a person that owned the property that was building an accessory structure to the structure they have on the property currently. Uh, that was, that was how it first came through.
Uh, that's not, I still might answer my question. The gentleman said he was building it for his residence, this project, and then along the way, he changed his mind and decided he would build it for more students and bigger. And then he changed course, but was his residence on this property what he was building for? Because somebody made a mistake by not checking that out to be sure it was going to be built as his resident, as he was saying he wanted to do.
Look, I, I can only speak to the ownership of the property. Is the owner of the property who was building this as an accessory structure on the property?
But that's something staff wouldn't check if his residence was there, where he's putting the application in for it?
Yeah, that was, that was the case. And what happened was, uh, after that was approved and that construction of his accessory structure was in progress, uh, he changed his mind a little bit and decided that he wanted to open that facility up more to the general public, uh, for a small amount of people. So what happened, that's what triggered the special exception, that brought the, uh, school into this with the cap at twenty. And then he went from there, he decided that he would like to see that school evolve more, and that's where we ended up with the, the larger number.
Yep.
So it was, it was kind of three separate processes, and the, the actual site plan and the structure of it for the special exception in this particular...
I understand, but the fact of it is, it went through a conditional use to be built at a residence of the person pulling the permit. But he doesn't, I don't believe, live on this property, or his home was not here, and we, staff didn't check further to make sure it was going to be placed as his residence. I mean, I don't mind that he changed and wanted it bigger and a bigger and better school for the kids, and I think that's great. And I think the use of this is going to be great. But staff can, you've got to double-check everything to make sure they're right, because this just compounded one thing after another, until we got this built in an area that's going to be homes in this area. It, it just doesn't fit, and I don't know why staff would even do something like that. I'm confused about that. And nobody's checked, if his house is here, but he's building a residential activity for his children at his residence. And I, I've yet to hear if his residence is here, and I don't believe it is.
If, if, I'm sorry, if you want me to respond to that, yes, they, the owner of the property provides deeds showing ownership at the time of those site plan reviews. So they showed that there was ownership there, and there was a structure there, so...
So you just went by ownership, you didn't go by what the conditional use that he was, he was going to build it.
Brad, you keep, Brad, you keep saying a structure, was there a house there? Was there a residence there?
Yeah, there was, what was believed to have been a residence there, it is.
Okay, so there was a residence on, on the property?
Yeah.
And he showed ownership, and so he permitted, it was permitted as an accessory use. Whether somebody, if there was no home there, the commissioner's point is well-taken, that you can't have an accessory if there's no, no dwelling. But if there's...
But all I'm getting at is, the person that was fixing to build this as his residence and then changed his mind later, his actual home where he lived is not there, it's not there today. But I, I understand what you're saying, so...
But I think we've, I understand the commissioner's point, but we've sort of moved beyond that, because the current application, which is before, you wouldn't require the residence to be there.
Right.
It's no longer an accessory use, it will be a primary use for this property.
Right.
And the special exception...
I understand, all right.
Also...
I think I made my point on that, but those things I think we need to look at ahead of time, so we don't have things like this happen and, and be put in an area that it would have been better, maybe in a commercial area to begin with. And, um, the next thing is, um, what are the conditions now? Because all I want, all I want this applicant to do is do what every other developer in our county is required to do, is if he has to build a road from Tyndale, I understand, substandard, to his property to provide for the traffic. I want to know when he has to do that, and then I want to know if there's any requirements to time or that when he starts the school, because these are things that can take a while, and it could be into next fall school year. So I just want to check, make sure that they can continue to do their school while they're waiting on the road, are there requirements to him that he has to do this by a certain time? And then also on the impact fee that he would have charged, because he's increased his, people are there from, I think from the twenty-five or twenty to, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty people or something, or a hundred-and-fifty people. So there is an impact fee difference, and just want to know what that requirement is.
I, I can answer the first question for you. Essentially, they need to bond the improvements to McHenry Road, uh, right off the bat, uh, and then it is required to be constructed within eighteen months. Eighteen months, from what we've seen, is essentially a reasonable expectation for a design permit, obtain the materials and the labor, and get it constructed kind of timeline these days.
Okay.
And anything faster than that would probably be very difficult to meet, uh, for anyone. So that was the, the deadline that we set out for you.
Okay.
And I can, Terry, to maybe just see the mobility fees, whether that was obtained?
Yes, as far as the mobility fees, they did already pay a small portion of what they would now owe, so we deducted that amount, it's just under twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, I think the total overall, uh, was about seventy-five thousand, so we deducted the amount that they paid, they owe just over, or just under fifty thousand now.
So you owe how much?
It, it should be in the memo, I think I detailed all of that information in the memo for you. Um, but they pay them...
When is that due?
That is due, um, at, they have an open permit, a remodel permit right now, and so they have to pay that fee prior to the CO for that open remodel permit.
And the number's forty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and forty-two cents.
Yes.
Okay. So that's got to be paid for the next school year, right?
Right, because they can't actually use that building until they get their CO for it, and they can't get the CO until they...
So that's okay, and eighteen months, I understand that, that'd be good for the road. What's the, uh, what happens if he doesn't do it in eighteen months?
He's, he has to put a bond up before we even, before the MPUD is even valid or effective.
So what happens then?
So if, if he does not put that bond up, then his MPUD is never effective. And if he defaults on it, then whatever happens at the end of eighteen months with his bond.
So the county would be required, the county would be required to call his bond and, and...
And then we'll end up building the road with the use of the money for the bond?
Yep.
Yeah, and, and that may depend on the timing, as you know, there's a Vision Road, like you were mentioning, that runs on the other side of the property, um, that we have some projects there nearing that area that may be building pieces of that, so it kind of would depend on, uh, you know, whether or not that Vision Road is in play yet or not, um, as to whether the county would use that and, and actually build that up the road.
Okay. All right. So if he doesn't meet that, and we pull the bond, there's no code enforcement, there's no shutting down of the school? That wouldn't happen? Would it happen?
So depending on, again, depending on the timeline, uh, the MPUD is not valid until the bond is in place, so if anything were to happen, that the bond did not get put in place, uh, the school could not open because it's not a valid use yet, uh, at least not for more than twenty, the twenty or so that are allowed.
I can't see this county closing down a school.
If it's, if it's after...
I have a problem seeing that picture.
I, I understand. If it's after they, they post the bond, uh, then we can call the bond, uh, like, uh, Mr. Snyder tried to say.
Right.
And we can, we can construct the road if we need to. And code enforcement can go out if there's other issues there on the site.
And I'm sure other people on top, but that, that answered my question. All I wanted to do is the right thing, and do like every developer in this county does, and has to meet their obligations and do what they need to do to be able to operate their business. So I'm good with it, as long as that's going to happen.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Time for the applicant?
Good afternoon, Chair, fellow commissioners, Brent Spain, Theriaque in Spain, eighteen oh-nine, Edgewater Drive, Orlando, Florida, on behalf of the Hendersons. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this afternoon. I do have a presentation...
Mr. Spain, you have been, you have been sworn?
I have.
Thank you, for the record.
I do have a full presentation, I provided you a color copy of it. I'm happy to run through that, if that's the board's, uh, pleasure. I did, before doing so, want to touch upon some of the questions and sort of just back up what staff had indicated. Historically, and I'll, I'll jump ahead, because this might actually help address one of the concerns on the procedural aspect. I just want to clear up that, yes, in November twenty nineteen, you'll see there was a pre-application meeting, and that was regarding a private ice hockey rink on the subject site. But then you'll see in August twenty twenty, uh, the applicant submitted the preliminary site construction plan for the Nest Hockey Academy private school. And then June twenty twenty-one, the special exception was approved for the private school, and as you heard, there was a cap on the number of students and employees. And I did want to mention the Vision Road, and I've got the special exception approval. There was actually a condition, Condition thirteen, uh, made reference to the need to dedicate the hundred-and-fifty feet of right-of-way for the Vision Road. So when the special exception came through, and the special exception was for an actual private school and hockey academy, it was not for an accessory use to the residence. But then staff also did impose that same condition again when the site plan, site development plan was approved again, three months after the special exception in September of twenty twenty-one. And in Condition six, again, they recognized that the Connected City Master Railway Plan had bisected this property and made note of the hundred-and-fifty-foot, uh, right-of-way that was needed. Staff already touched upon, uh, probably the two most important conditions, so I'll jump ahead to those. And before I get there, this is the MPUD site plan, everything that's on the site plan, all the structures actually exist today. The only thing that doesn't exist is circled in red on the overhead, and that's the future connection to the Vision Road. And then a couple of the conditions that got brought up with Commissioner Oakley's questions, is one, Condition of Approval Eight does require those improvements to McHenry Road, to bring it up to county standards from our project driveway all the way up to Tyndale Road. It requires a posting of the performance bond, which you were informed about, and completion within the eighteen months. I've just shown up here, it's a little hard to read on the slide, but on the right, just to show our commitment to the project, that's already the letter of, uh, commitment and approval from the bond company, saying that they stand ready and, uh, able to issue that performance bond as soon as we provide them written confirmation of the county commission's approval of the MPUD with that condition. But we went ahead and got that in advance of today, so you all knew we're going to meet that Condition of Approval Eight. And then Condition of Approval Fourteen sort of ties into that. Again, we have to dedicate the right-of-way for the Vision Road on the west side of our site, and then there's a condition that within one year of completion of that Vision Road, we will connect to the Vision Road, and then McHenry Road will be an emergency access only for this school facility. The other Condition of Approval I wanted to mention, which also was discussed, is Condition of Approval Twenty-seven, which goes to the mobility fees, they're, they total a little over seventy-seven thousand. My client's already paid just under twenty-nine thousand, and we will have to pay an additional forty-eight thousand and some change before the MPUD, before you this afternoon becomes effective. And then it also required, the building department wanted a certified statement from our client, recognizing and acknowledging that notwithstanding building occupancy counts, that the student enrollment is capped at one-fifty, unless and until an amendment to the MPUD, MPUD is approved. So we've gone ahead, we've already submitted that sworn statement and acknowledgement from my client, you'll see it on the right there. Ms. Snyder has a copy of that, and the highlighted text is where Mr. Henderson, as the president of the property owner, acknowledges that cap on student enrollment. With that said, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, I can run through, through the presentation if need... I can run through, through the presentation if needed. I did want to emphasize this, this project's a school first and foremost, which has this unique feature of offering these students, uh, hockey. And I can tell you, it's, it's a one-of-a-kind facility in Florida right now. Any type of academy that's offered anywhere in the state does not have their own dedicated rink. And just flipping through these photos real quick, it's a beautiful facility. I know many of you have probably been out to it. Here's a picture of the students from the inaugural year, which was capped at thirteen students, seventh and eighth grade, doing the pledge. There they are with the school-provided electronic devices studying, much like my son who's in public school. Here they are doing science experiments and group work projects together. And then you have the hockey aspect on the back end, which is just extremely, extremely unique. And you can see it's a state-of-the-art facility in the top left. You see they've got a training screen, they can stop during training and show the students exactly what's going on on the ice. And I can, uh, certainly enjoy the picture on the bottom right. I'm going to guess that young gentleman just scored a goal. I have a travel hockey player.
You?
I have a travel hockey player myself, so I'm, I'm very familiar with that look. I'm also familiar with the one when it hits the goalpost and misses. But again, I, again, I didn't go through the whole presentation, but I, I think this slide sums up why we're here this afternoon and why these young gentlemen are in the stands dressed nicer than I am. Is one, the mission statement, this is about good hockey, but more importantly, it's about great people. And then you'll see the Nest Hockey Academy crux, next generation learning, exceptional hockey, servant leadership, and transform lives. I mean, this is about great students. It's really about creating great hockey players. But the end of the day, it's about creating great little citizens that go out and make a difference in the world. So we certainly support, uh, and agree with staff's recommendation of approval. We respectfully ask you to approve the MPUD this afternoon. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have and thank you for your support.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Oakley?
Uh, one question, I, I'm not sure, but is this a Christian school or five oh one C three or, or not?
Yeah, that's sort of, uh, I'll answer in two-part questions. One, it's a private, uh, school and it's a for-profit corporation like many schools are operated, and it's based on a Christian curriculum. So it's affiliated with Liberty University in order to get its accreditation, which the goal is it will be fully accredited within three years.
Yep, okay, sounds good. I, uh, I guess we have more public to hear, but after that I'll be ready for a motion.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Whiteman?
No, I'm here.
Ms. Starkey?
I'm here.
Uh, I just want to say, uh, to the kids out there, you guys doing all lucky law. But, uh, yeah, looks like a great project as well. So now it's time for public comment. Anyone here for public signed up?
We do, we have three and, well, maybe four, I guess. So the first one signed up is John and Sherry Parlapiano, I think that's how you say that. When you come to the podium and speak for the record, please state your name and address for the record and let us know if you've been sworn.
We've been sworn. It's, uh, John and Sherry Parlapiano, nine thousand and four McHenry. We're twenty-five-year residents of that road and we've seen a lot of changes. Some, not really good, but, um, understand it's an unimprovised road, a prepared road. For the, uh, let's say splitting path from fifty-two to Overpass, Tyndale Road being the cutoff point, it's paved, uh, south there substandard, um, we deal with all kinds of traffic, uh, people doing donuts on the road. You can, you can imagine what goes on, on dirt roads, I'm sure you're familiar with it. To suggest that you would have a hundred and fifty more people driving up and down that road. Kudos to them, uh, I'm for progress. I admire the fact that they came here and stand before you to support what they believe in, and I'm not against them. But I'm for my quality of life, and I think that should weigh in on your decisions. There's twenty-five people that live south of, um, Tyndale Road, excuse me, to, to Overpass. There's only three or four that live north of Tyndale Road. So the fact that it's paved, you can't suggest to me that all the hundred and fifty extra people that are going to come down are all going to come from fifty-two down a paved road and not affect the lives of the people that live south of Tyndale Road all the way up. Um, as far as the alcohol goes, it keeps seem they're an academy, they keep seem they're, they're a school. I'm a twenty-eight-year retired law enforcement officer, I know the effects of alcohol. I know what happens when you bring alcohol into a residential area. It's quite the same reason why they don't allow it in schools. You won't see alcohol at any venue at any public school. These are the same boys and girls that attend those schools. And they can use Christian all they want to, and I'm sure they're good people, I won't speak bad of them, but the effects of alcohol doesn't just not target Christian people, it targets everybody. I can see I'm getting lower on my time.
And as far as, I don't know what you've been told, obviously, what, we've experienced the same thing that apparently that you've been told and none of it's determined, I'd like to know.
Hold on a second, Ms.
Yes.
So you get three minutes and she gets three minutes.
Oh, okay.
So you've completed your for-public comment and then, and then your wife can.
Oh, awesome, okay. Um, I'd just like to say one thing, um, to the chairman. These young people that are here, I'm sure they're great and they deserve something like that. Should never have happened in a residential area. It's an oversight, it's there, we have to deal with it. But you can't keep on making decisions on a bad decision to make things worse for the people that live there. Um, the, these young kids, I support them and, and I'm proud of the fact that they stand up and speak for what, um, they, uh, they believe in. But these young kids are already there at the Nest Academy. Nothing's going to happen, if you disapprove this, nothing's going to happen to them. They have their academy, they're still going to do it. We're talking about the hundred and fifty people that are coming. That's what we're afraid of. What are the effects of my road? What are the effects for the animals that live on our road and the kids? We already have problems with, uh, off-road vehicles and things like that, but, um, it, you can't continue to make decisions that are going, a bad decision on another bad decision, on another bad decision, um, because something was overlooked. And we ask that you not approve, um, the, the project, so.
So when you come to them, if you'll give your name and address and state whether you've been sworn?
My name's Sherry Parlapiano, I have been sworn, uh, nine thousand and four McHenry Road is where I live.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, what you have been told, the same thing is, it, in my opinion, it kind of gives collusion to the commissioner's office when things are getting done without proper permits and stuff. Like you said, that Mr. Oakley said, that he was unaware that things were happening once it was brought to his attention, that he put a stop to it. We didn't even know this was happening. We didn't even know anything about it. Um, we, we never got notified when they first started doing all that stuff. He had a parking lot in even before he had the, the building up. We, you know, we thought, well, um, maybe he was doing a landscaping business and just wanted a place for people to park or something like that. Never in our wildest dreams did we know that a commercial building was growing up in a, in a residential area. Um, we, like I said, it just kind of gives a sense that, you know, when things are doing, done underhandedly, it makes us question government as to how things are getting done. Are they getting done under the table? Do we know somebody? What, what's going on? Because there's no oversight, there's no consequences. It's like, okay, well, just don't do that again and things keep, just keep getting worse and worse. As far as him, I don't know if he told you he lived on that property. He doesn't live on that property and unless I'm mistaken, they live in Brookside. He's never lived on that property. It was bought, a ten-acre tract of land was brought from, there used to be some Mexican people living there. They built this little barn to minium. The living quarters were up top and they parked their vehicles underneath. I know this well because they used to play their music, you know, amplified music every single night, um, for, for a long time. But anyway, before he bought the property. And it was, so it's, it's cheaper to buy residential property and try to make it commercial than it is to go get commercial land and do what he wants to do. That's really what he should have done. But instead, he buys a ten-acre parcel of land in a residential area and wants to force his, his business on everybody else. There's nothing commercial around there. You have to go out to One Pasco Center before you see commercial, uh, which is on, north of fifty-two. He has see much in between houses. It, it has no business there. It's on a, it's on a paved, it's not even on a paved road, it's on a dirt road. There's no infrastructure there, there's, there's nothing. And so how this just keeps getting compounded is just, um, it's just bewildering to us how, how all this is taking shape and, and this is just happening right under our noses. It's just, it's crazy. There's, like I said, it doesn't seem like there's any, um, oversight, there's no consequences, there, there's nothing. Just do what you want to do and know the right people and we'll just get stuff passed. When we moved out there twenty-six years ago, um, in fact, it's funny that, it was, it was Hobby and Guilford that sold us the property out there. And we were told in ninety-seven that the road would be paved. Hmm, so, interesting. But yes, it's a residential area, there is no commercial out there and the just, um, the, the traffic is, the way it is now is incredible. The county can't keep up with it. We take our own tractor out there, our neighbors take their tractor out there and try to do what we can to keep the, uh, the, the holes down and stuff like that to make it more bearable for us to drive on. These people don't have to do that, they don't live on the road, but they get used to the road. And it's just going to tear it up even more. And every time we call the county to get, you know, the trucks out there to, to help clear up the road, it doesn't, they never, they never really want to do it. Eventually they get out there, but they never really want to do it. It's just, it's always a problem. Any questions for me?
Uh, we don't do questions like that, only for staff and applicants. Thank you.
Okay, the next person signed up is Lauren Levi.
Good afternoon, my name is Lauren Levi, I've already been sworn. My address is nine four three two McHenry Road, right off the corner of McHenry and Tyndale. Some of you might recall me speaking at the MPUD Town Center here nearly a year ago. I'm a huge proponent for supporting family-owned businesses. My grandfather owned a grocery store. My parents owned a medical-grade furniture company before COVID forced us to close. So I'm all for supporting local family-owned businesses. And I have really gotten to enjoy Russ and his family as neighbors and all the help they have been to my family and I. So I don't necessarily have a problem with the growth of his business and more so with the county. At the MPUD hearing for the Town Center, I told you all about my concerns with the growth and the traffic and the people that would be using McHenry Road as a through road. And Brad Tipton and some of you made the promise that that wouldn't happen nor would it be an issue. Not only has that happened, but we also have a lot of vehicles on our road now due to Nest Hockey. While in fifty-fifty on whether paving the road would be the best idea based on the fact that most people don't want to drive down a dirt road and paving it would cause more traffic, I'm more concerned at the fact that the paving of the road, the county wants to take part of my family's property past our fence line. Why take our property when the county already owns the strip of land across the street from me to be able to widen and pave the road? In our land deed, we actually own a portion of the road as well, which I believe the county has already taken as right-of-way when it's not even maintained for the county to do that. The property the county already owns across from me is lot number two one dash two five dash two zero dash zero 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 dash four nine nine zero zero dash zero zero one zero. Using that property instead of mine would also lessen the curve in the road and making it safer to drive, especially if it was paved due to higher rate of speed. I told you all at the last hearing, my concerns of the road due to people hitting our fence, well, that's become even more of a concern. A county bus just hit my fence six weeks ago, which is why they are, which, why they're even driving northbound on McHenry baffles me because the county, the county paid fifty-two to Tyndale before, therefore, a bus shouldn't even have been taking the route it did to hit my fence. So I'm asking all of you again, and instead of promising me it's not going to be an issue this time, how are you going to help and protect my family and I? I understand growth is bound to happen and my property doesn't have to be taken as a result of it. Because right now you are trying to take my property for right-of-way when you already own property on the west side of the road going south. People have been hitting my fence for ages and even county vehicles are starting to hit my fence. And I'm really starting to lose faith in my county and county commissioners being here for the people like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have one more person signed up, Kim Britt.
Thank you, my name is Kim Britt. The address in which I am discussing today is nine four three two McHenry Road, Wesley Chapel. I have been sworn. I am here on behalf of my mother who is still recovering from a vehicle crash after experiencing an episode. First, I'd like to say that we're very excited that Nest Hockey Academy is a successful business, good neighbor, and we wish nothing but the best for them. Second, last year amongst our concerns, we discussed the possibility of the increasing traffic on McHenry Road at the MPUD hearing for the developments across the road, and we were assured that McHenry Road would become a private road, remaining as a dirt road, as there are plans to create new roads and therefore not an issue. Well, unfortunately, the traffic on McHenry Road has increased exponentially, and I do agree that it needs to be paved. However, as you just heard from Lauren, I too will reiterate, the reason for my addressing the commission today is the marker in which has been placed on or about our property line to pave McHenry Road. The property line across the road from our driveway on the curve is already bad enough. I think it's in the best interest to decrease the curve in the road by utilizing that property line located on the west side going south. If you have not actually been out there to see for yourself, which I highly recommend, you will see the growth on that property is so overgrown that traffic cannot see around that curve going south or north. And at this point, I'm surprised that we nor one of our visitors have not been hit while trying to turn into our driveway while driving, traveling south. I know my family has contacted code enforcement in the past regarding this issue as well. In my opinion, by utilizing that property and decreasing the curve, it should cut down. But notice I said it should cut, cut down and prayerfully will eliminate the crashes into the fence. I did have a question, uh, about the visionary road being ten years, plus or minus ten years from now, and McHenry Road will become an emergency road, but ten years. So, thank you, thank you for hearing me on this issue.
Thank you.
There is no one else signed up?
No one else signed up for public comment? Does anyone from the audience like to speak about this item? Please come forward. And then you need a name and address and.
State whether they've been sworn.
Address for a child though?
Uh, you can, he can just give his name and state whether he's been sworn.
Just your name and state if you've been sworn.
Uh, Cannon Justice.
Okay, and have you been sworn?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm a, a current student athlete at Nest Hockey Academy. In September of twenty twenty-two, I began attending Nest Hockey Academy not knowing the journey I was embarking on. I have been in public school my whole life, so a part of me was unsure of the unknown. By Christmas, I knew my parents and I had made the right decision. I have always been an average student at best, but at the Nest, I finally had teachers that were willing to invest in me, so much so that I finished the year with a four-point O GPA, test scores eleven percent over the national average, and most importantly, confidence in myself. There was a day earlier in the school year that I had gotten so far ahead on my schoolwork that Mr. Henderson had me helping him build furniture. While this may seem different for a child to be building school furniture, I realized it was a skill I never would have learned at any other school. The Nest goes beyond math, science, reading, and social studies. It's helping shape us into good people with everyday life lessons. We are also being taught how to treat our bodies right as growing athletes with nutrition and exercise tailored to our aging, our capabilities. Today, I urge you, our Pasco County Commissioners, to pass the rezoning of this school I have come to love, so that kids like me can be given the same opportunities.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience?
I'll have another question.
Hi, Jacqueline Justice, three two one five five, Otogaloo. Uh, that was just my son.
Have you been sworn?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you.
Um, sorry. As a follow-up to what my son just said, I have personally witnessed the transformation of all these children on and off the ice. I'm speaking on behalf of all the parents today so that you don't have to listen to twenty other people say the same things. The Hendersons have created an opportunity for our children that most will never have. The opportunity that could lead to other opportunities, not just based on hockey, but on relationships and on, sorry, based on relationships and being outstanding citizens of our community. Our children have plenty of opportunities to get in trouble. They have chosen a more difficult path with higher expectations. These kids want to succeed. You won't see them all in the NHL, but you will see them all being successful, which is the goal. What an incredible opportunity the Hendersons have created for our community in Pasco County. Some of the kids are here today in their chapel uniform and they would like to introduce themselves quickly to you if you would like to meet them.
Sure.
Boys?
Cannon Justice.
Paul Henderson.
Ryan.
Ryan.
Justin.
Josh.
Jackson.
Without this rezoning, the young men you see here today cannot, cannot be furthered due to such strict occupancy limits. So we urge you to pass the rezoning so these student athletes can continue.
So we urge you to pass the rezoning so these student athletes can continue to learn, grow, play hockey, and most importantly, give other opportunities to young student athletes, give other student athletes the same opportunities that they have been given by the Hendersons. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last call. Anyone else from the audience who want to speak to this item? Close, close, we're gonna close public comment? I'm gonna check on WebEx first.
No, the two individuals that signed up for WebEx also came in person.
They came in person. All right, Commissioner Oakley?
Um, I guess the attorney would come back. I guess he could answer this.
Yeah, you need to take, I put it below, be in, be in discussion.
Great, thank you, Chair. I just have a couple of points I want to respond to, and then I'm happy to respond to the Commissioner's question. One, with respect to access, we're committed to encouraging everybody coming into facility exit out McHenry towards Tindall Road. The directions provided to come to the facility will direct all people to come in that way. So that will eventually be the paved portion of McHenry. With respect to the question on the waiver for alcohol, just want to clarify, there's not gonna be any alcohol served during school hours. This is envisioned. Most private schools have a foundation. Foundations a lot of time have fundraising events, so this just allows that as an option as well as if there were a special event held at the facility. Staff indicated we still have to jump through the hurdle and actually get an administrative use permit to even do that. There was also several comments about this is a predominantly residential area. I want to just briefly point out a few things. One, private schools are allowed in the AC zoning district as a special exception, which is how this got approved. Schools are also allowed anywhere in the county in the agricultural future land use category, which this property has. But more importantly, a staff commented upon, and you've heard, this site's located within Connected City. It's in the, the business core part of that. It's very close to the urban core part of Connected City. It's very close to the MPUD for Pasco County Town Center that you all approved last summer. And it's in the South Market area, which your own comprehensive plan designates for higher densities and intensities. So again, this is an area, and the staff, I think, described it very well. This area is in transition. In fact, when I did a Google search on it, the first thing that comes up is your all approval of the Pasco Town Center. The first neighbors who had spoke and had questions regarding the special exception and how it got approved, I just want the record to reflect, there was a fully noticed public hearing held before the planning commission on that. Those, unfortunately for those individuals, their property's outside, they require mail notice, so the extent they didn't get mail notice, that would be why. It wasn't something that was nefariously done. There's a record of that hearing and has a copy of the published notice. Also, just tying in, I think you saw it on the slide, that this process has been going on for a while, and the staff has thoroughly reviewed this project. It's three and a half years in, in the making for this final step. So it hasn't been something that has just been sort of railroaded through any backdoors or the like. And then lastly, just the question about the right-of-way and the paving. The required widening of McHenry Road is within established right-of-way, so there's no expectation for any additional property to be taken. The flags that one of the neighbors remarked, those are simply survey stakes. That's not actually marking where the edge of pavement actually might go, but that was the first step in moving forward with these roadway improvements is one, to survey the area. So that's been done. That's in to the county for review and the like, but I, I wanted to clear up, the road widening's gonna happen within established right-of-way. We're, we're not taking anyone's property. So thank you, Commissioner Oakley. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner. Well, you pretty much in your statement, you answered my question. One was about alcohol and, and it being a school, a Christian school too, so I understand that. And the other's about paying, paying attention to the residential folks that are around there that make life as easy as possible for them because you're coming in on them. They've been there a long time, so. And the reason I use the term 10 years for a vision road to come in, a normal road in the county that we set to repave and rework takes at least five years. So I know it's not gonna happen in less than five years, but that vision road with the transition of things coming on the Pasco Town Center and all, that's gonna take a little time, but that'll gradually get built, but between, probably between the five and the 10 years. And then when that happens, McHenry won't be paved, but just a short distance. If I was 150 new people driving down the road, I'd come on the paved part rather than go down the dirt part in the few, near future. And then the vision road will take care of that in time, as time comes. But yeah, those are reasons, so. But I think it'd be a great school. I think it'd be great for these kids and, and hopefully we get great citizens for Pasco County right here in our area here, so I look forward to seeing that. With that, I'd like to move to approval.
You have a second?
Second.
And I'm just gonna have a little further discussion, just to say that, you know, Commissioner Oakley, this was a tough one. I know it was your district. I was approached by this by my grandfather, who has troubled watching his grandson play hockey for a long time, so I drove down, took a look at the site, and I want to say he built a, Mr. Henderson built an amazing facility. When I saw pictures of Steven Stamkos and Victor Hedman there and the support that you had, I knew you had something going special. Seeing your students here today shows me just that, never mind the hockey mom. But going, going through it, you know, why this was ever even limited to 20 units, I couldn't understand. One thing I'd like to say with staff as they do look in to the applicant as well is talk to the residents about where the roadway is going to go officially, if there's a way to modify it without causing too much harm, if you can accommodate them and make it safer. I think we should take a look at doing that, but if you can do that after the fact, that would be fine with me. Commissioner Starkey?
A couple of things. I did go visit that building last year, maybe, maybe two years ago, time's flying. I think it's a phenomenal asset to the county, but I get what the residents are saying. It's, that it appears to be in a area where it shouldn't, but I promise you, you have massive changes coming to that area, and you guys might want to meet with our staff so you understand what is coming at 52 and 75, because that area is very much changing and it's changing quickly. So just so you can prepare and make decisions on your own property, take a look at what's coming in that area because it's not gonna be like it is now.
And I'd like to say, when I went out there to the site as well, I noticed driving in, right at the telephone pole where Tindall hits, there's a big sign there that's advertised. I think it's 3,500 units, a hotel, commercial, et cetera. So knowing that was part of Connected City, I checked to be sure this was part of Connected City too, so yeah, a lot of things gonna change out there. Could be a lot to the benefit for you as well, but Commissioner Oakley, you do have some?
Yeah, I wanna add something.
No, no, I just, I just want to go a little further, and I'll give you the floor.
I have one more thing.
And I know with VOPH, they have the roads funded with extra surcharges, et cetera, and Commissioner Oakley, if you want to push that along, I'm sure you'll have some influence to those folks to kind of help that vision road get done quicker than sooner.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah. But I wanted to add something. I know everybody knows Moffitt Cure for Cancer is coming for Pasco County, and it's a great thing for our citizens of, and it's a big deal. There's 16 million square foot of warehouse, doctors' offices, research clinics, and all this coming to that center park. It's right there east of Sun Coast and to the west of 41. It's huge, 16 million square foot of workspace there is, is big. Right here at 52 and 75, where we're talking about today, is 21 million square feet of warehouse and all that coming to this area. The one, if you've seen that huge building that's targets, distribution center to the northeast of 75 and 52, that's, that's a huge building. There's two buildings on this property between 52 and where the school is. One of them's 1.3 million square foot, footprint. The other one's 1.6 million square foot on footprint. And right in our area in East Pasco, in that area, there's, there's coming 101,000 jobs in that area. Those are all different businesses. I mean, there's a great deal happening in our area in East Pasco that we haven't ever seen before, to be able to live here, play here, get, you know, have, go to school, go to college here, and actually end up, because we're gonna have jobs, be able to work here. So it's great for our citizens, and we all want as many high-paying jobs as we can get for our citizens, so. But it's a great thing to be looking forward.
Commissioner Starkey?
The other thing I wanted to say was, actually, the school districts do allow alcohol. When we built Starkey K8 and the cultural center next door, we built into that the ability for receptions and parties.
Right.
Fun, you know, cocktail parties or whatever.
Kirkland Ranch has that also.
Yeah, so I mean, there's all kinds of conditions with that, but it is possible that a school would have a fundraiser for adults and, you know, have a glass of wine or whatever, so, yeah.
Mr. Tippett?
Brad Tippett, Planning and Development. Just one other clarification there. This is only for the, the distance waiver for alcohol. This doesn't mean that they would be able to serve or anything. They still have to go through those other processes should they want to do it at that site, but this is something we're putting at all the MPDs that have non-residential components in Connected City, because that area is meant to be dense, it's meant to be close, and we don't want a person to not be able to have a sidewalk cafe serving wine because they're 995 feet from a school or vice versa. So there's, there's a bunch of reasons why we do that. We put in all the MPDs in this area that are non-residential, so it's not specific to them. It's not that they've requested it.
But you said they have to come in for permission every time?
Correct. There's, there's a, to actually serve alcohol, there's a separate permit that's required.
Why, why are we, why are we doing that?
Because that's what your code requires. We're all, all people who serve alcohol. It's, you used to have?
Wait, wait, don't say all people. I have friends over at my house, and I promise you, I don't get any.
We'd be the sale of beverages.
Any business that serves alcohol, those used to be public hearings that came before you, they're now just administrative.
Okay, all right. So they just have to ask permission to be able to have that? And it's not for every time, it's just for one time?
It depends on the, what's being done, but yes. Like a Chili's would do it one time for their facility, but yes.
Okay, gotcha.
And Brad, if you would just get with the residents as well, as well as the applicant about the road safety part? Let them know where it's gonna go?
And I will give them, we can set up a time to talk and I'll be with them.
Okay. Very good. All right, motion's been, motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. We'll go to item P46.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, can I, since we're still technically in the consent agenda, can I get a motion to reconsider P41, the continuance that you, you made?
Yes. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion on P41 to reconsider? Can I get a motion?
That'd be you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
For the record, Commissioner Oakley made the motion and Starkey seconded, correct?
Correct.
Commissioner, you seconded?
I did second.
Okay, yeah.
Just, let's hang up one second.
Can we take the conversations outside, please?
All right, Mr. County Attorney.
So the, the memo that was presented with P41 said, continue to the August 8th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City. It was in thereafter as sound may be heard. The planning director, I believe, asked you to continue it to June 20th, so we're going with the August 8th date, correct?
Yes, correct. I, I misread my, the wrong note, so it's August 8th continuance.
So the motion would be continued for this, a new motion, continue to the August 8th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, back to item P46.
P46 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on April 19th, 2023.
Item P46 is a zoning amendment, Northwood MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development by Taylor Morrison of Florida Incorporated. It's a rezoning request for the MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to add car wash as a use for parcel seven C and to remove the word elementary from the school site. And do you have a presentation if one is needed? But this is related to the item P43, which rescinded the DRI from the area.
I don't need a, I don't need a staff presentation. I just have my comments for the applicant.
So I just want to go right to the applicant's?
Yeah, the board's, I'm comfortable with that.
I didn't want to sit back there the whole time. Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport, Richey, Florida for the applicant. We're available for any questions. This is a old DRI, an old MPUD, very unique circumstances. I think your staff did a really good job of laying out the reasoning and the request. I'm available for any questions.
Ms. Willhite, were you sworn in?
Yes, I was, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I pulled this item A, it's another car wash in Pasco County along 54, 56. I just wanted to highlight and really make sure that this was just a special, a special case, that this is, this isn't an exception. When I looked at this item, it's actually a place where a car wash fits compared to some of the other locations that we see car washes popping up. I think that we probably could have tried to choose a different, I don't know, condition it to put something better there. So this, 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 this spot actually, it makes sense for car wash. It's not exciting to have another car wash coming, but this is an example of where a car wash actually fits, than a setting next to a racetrack where it's connected. And I just wanted to highlight that this, there's a kind of a special exception to this and just that I'm sensitive to, as folks come up and talk to us, it's another car wash, it's another storage facility. So that's just, I just wanted to make those comments.
And we acknowledge that.
And Commissioner Waitman, maybe it's time we have a conversation about those, like we did, storage units, apartment complex before, locations, et cetera, so if you want to bring that up, we'll talk about it in committee reports coming up, okay? So that I, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. All right, so we did committee reports up to the commissioners and?
But I have another photo for you. Did I send it?
Wait a second, whoa, 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 no, 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 no. We're gonna wait and see if you have time. We're gonna see if you have time. Hang on, we'll come back to you at the end. County Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the privilege of partially attending a part, portion of a Sterling Conference last week, and it was exciting to hear at the awards that a Pasco County business actually won a, was the, was the awardee of the Gold Award from the 2023 Sterling Committee for Manufacturing Business Excellence. So True Simulation over in, I don't know if it's Odessa, Lutz, Land O' Lakes, but right there at the Sun Coast and 54, was recognized with, with this prestigious award Friday night, so we're happy to have even our businesses performing to that, that high standard. So hats off to them. The only other thing I'd like to mention is a shout out to our utilities team. They actually won the Florida Top Ops Competition at the Florida Water Resources Conference. I think it was last week or the week before. This is a, a big honor. It's, it's a testimony to the professionalism and the expertise of the same folks that, while they were filling the lagoon there, Commissioner Oakley, keeping, keeping the water flowing, and the only thing more impressive than that is the bill that was submitted for that filling, so, but hats off to them, and we, we just wanted to shout them out. So thank you, that's all.
Okay, County Attorney?
I don't have anything for you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
I do not have anything either.
Okay. Commissioner Starkey, I'll come to you first.
Good. Can you tell my father what they're? Yay, this is truist at Mitchell and at, at Sun Coast, no, 54 and Little. And they are putting their trees in, so I'm very, very excited that they're?
In the middle of the driveway there? They're gonna?
They're putting them back in where they were all taken out. I will say, I also stopped by the Steak and Shake and talked to them a couple times, and they are also putting their landscaping back in. So commissioners, you can go buy your businesses. So, Commissioners, you can go by your businesses and don't threaten them. I already got, I was already told that. But you can let them know. They can tell you how to word it, because they've told me how to, and it's happened, getting plants back in. So, I also spoke to the Land O' Lakes Rotary, that's why it was not up, the Marata groundbreaking, about the trail going through Land O' Lakes, and they're very, very excited about it and looking forward to it. Not one complainer compared to another area that will remain, isn't it? And, and also, that was my day I had my CEO tour, so, but Marata looks great. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Under my committee reports, I think I got a couple of pictures as well. We did our cleanup at Fox Hollow on Sunday.
Wow, we all cleaned up.
I'm telling you. Now, you guys outperformed us. We only had, I think, 23 tons, but I want to tell you, there was at least, there were several neighbors who weren't able to get their stuff out to the street, kind of went out there, put on the edge of the street with them, or they put out on the street, and grappling trucks, as you see right there, put it right in, picked it up for them, and we had one resident who was like really amazed. He was a young, young man, working hard, was a tired person, had a three-year-old daughter, and he, he was just overwhelmed with all the stuff he had in his yard from when he moved in. He was trying to like rehab it to come back out. And I'll tell you, he'd moved a whole bunch of things out, moved back, and we had about one o'clock that grappling truck was going to head out, went out there with him, and this is, this is his house right there, picking all that stuff up.
Oh, my goodness.
He was like amazed, he doesn't look, watch his look.
Ah.
That's my great guy. And I'll tell you, in the rain, our grappling truck, I just kept on working right on through this, the extra crew that was out there too, they got the job done. It was supposed to end at three, and they kept on going right to the end.
You know, I, I've done it a couple of times now, and I feel the way we got the, had the best response was when, all they had to do is put it in their driveway. And I don't know why we couldn't do it like that at Holiday Lakes, but, I mean, that, there's no way that guy could haul that, all that stuff down. It's very hard for, for one person to haul heavy stuff down. I mean, we picked up a wave runner when we were doing it at, last year. So, when possible, I think it's better if they could just put it on their street.
Well, let me, let me say this. It's, it's hard to do that, especially if you can get them to go do it, it just saves so much time when they get loaded and put it right in there. It's already contained, because grappling trucks can only, only take so much. The great thing, if code goes out early, and they kind of go spot the sites and go put door knockers out there, and I will say, we didn't do it this time, kind of forgot that step, but I think they went out there and just let people know what was going on. If we, when we done that in like Gulf Hounds or whatever-
Yeah.
-that extra approach, you can look and you can see the troubled homes. Like when I pulled up to that guy's house, I saw this big trailer, all sorts of stuff on it, saw stuff in the front, I kind of knocked nicely and said-
Yep, done.
-hey, you know, we got a cleanup going on. Can you get the stuff out to the curb or even get it down to us? Because he did have a truck there. And, you know, still folks like that. And then around the, that works. But if we get code out earlier, and frankly, I think we did Country Club Estates, and my, my two assistants and I, we actually walked the whole area, dropped off the fires ourselves, put them out there, and we had a huge turnout there too. But I think for those that can't get it out, the grappling trucks and our guys do go out there, so it's great, but I think that's a good setup, and just little extra in, in the woods, in the weeds with the folks can, can help that happen. But they did a phenomenal job.
Last year when we did my neighborhood, across 19, not in that neighborhood, was the hoarder who let us, Katie and Jenny and I, or someone, I don't know, not Jenny, we went and, you know, cleaned up that, oh, Kelly Quonk, we went and cleaned up that lady's yard. I think it's back at it sadly, but not the really, really bad one that was in the street with the cone. This is a different one, I'm interested. So, but anyway, that, that worked out.
I think I got a couple of pictures of La Marada up there. That might be it.
With the mermaid? You got the mermaid?
Yeah, not as intense as Commissioner Oakley's pictures over there. He was well-positioned there. Anyway, that, that was an awesome, awesome, awesome day out there, and just, just embraced, like the hockey rink, great amenity for our citizens to enjoy, improved quality of life. This thing is going to be amazing for improving quality of life as well, so I think we keep